Called to order the Board of County Commissioners Work Session for March 11th, 2014. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Salute to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect relationship among the United States.
Do any changes need to come on the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda then?
Motion to accept agenda as written.
Second? The motion is proposed second to accept the agenda, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing on all those in favor, sitting five saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regards to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with the Grant County Resolution 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input during this meeting. So the first item on the agenda today is the tire derived fuel presentation. If you guys want to introduce yourselves at the mic and turn it on, we'll get it started. Do we need to turn, cut the lights or do you have a little bit of talking first?
No, we can turn the lights.
Press the white button.
The white button. Is it red now?
Yes, thank you.
That means it's working.
Thank you everybody, good morning. My name is Saula Miedes, I'm the plant manager of the Tejeras cement plant up in Tejeras, near the Albuquerque. And with me is Health Stratton, is our company attorney. So what I'm gonna do is just present what we are doing regarding to our tires project. So we present this document in, what is it, two months ago, three months ago, in the New Mexico Associations of Counties. So just present you our project and in one way or another have your input or your support for this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and all your team for this meeting again. So I'm gonna start with this. Logistic question, how much time do I have?
We want to know about your product and what you're doing, so I mean, we'll go until we're done.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Okay. Here's a brief description of what is our objective for this presentation. I'm gonna give you a GCC overview for all the company. And going down what is Tejeras, some topics what we consider that burning tires is beneficial, a small title review, what's going on with the tires, cement 101, just to understand why this technology helps to solve this problem. And at the end, what is the status of the project nowadays? Okay. This is the GCC of America, these are locations, and you can see some of the blue triangles are our cement terminals that we have in the states. The red lines are the ready-mix plants, pretty much those are in the middle. And we have a coal mine that is pretty much here that supplies our coal for our companies. And we have three cement plants, one in Tejeras, New Mexico, one in Pueblo, Colorado, and one in Rapid City, South Dakota. So pretty much that is our business in the states. Tejeras, this plant has been in the state for right now 55 years, in the community, with 78 employees. GCC values are, we want to be really tight and bond with the community, so wherever we go, we try to have that bound. This is part of our chairman philosophy, wherever you go, you need to be a good neighbor. So based on those values is what we're working on. Also environmentally responsible, that's the reason we want to try to do things correctly and properly according to regulations and also with the community input. So based on that, we are aware of the tire problem, but also we are aware that we are part of that solution. So we are a proper tire disposal technology appoint. Going in detail, I mean, our plant, in this case my plant, is a half a million metric tons capacity of cement. We have two long dry keons, and I will explain that later. That capacity is 625 metric tons per day. We have three finished ball reos growing produced cement. Storage capacity, 52,000 tons. We have a centralized operation control that from one scene you can control the whole plant, you have every single parameter in the field, you can see it, trend it, and control it. Regarding to the quality, we have two, let's say, state of art devices. I mean, the XR app is based on X-ray and the XRD that we use for different purposes. And if you can see there, our product portfolio is type 1, 2, type 3 that they use in the oil well, type 5 that is sulfate resistant, oil well cement, we might use in the class G, class B for all the oil wells and mines. A little bit about our people, and this is kind of historical, what we have since 2012, 70 people, 71 people, 2013, and we're expect to have 79 in 2014. We're in the process to hire another four people to complete our complete staff. It's not clear there, but it's trying to represent the percentage of the people where they live in the Albuquerque metro area. So I think Albuquerque is 71%, New Orange is line, Bellem is 2%, Tejeras is 4%, Edwood is close to 2%, and so on. What are our economical contributions to the state? You can see pretty much in taxes, we pay around 1.5 million. Right now they are counting, making the number for 2013. And total salary is around $7 million. And pretty much our business in the community is around $28,000, $29,000 for volumes for parts, materials, et cetera. And the average salary with benefits is around $85,000, $86,000. So that is pretty much the picture for the plant. Now, tires. Perhaps most of you know that the average generation of tires, oh, we generate one tire per year per person. New Mexico generates around 2 million tires per year is what is the information that we have so far. And many of those tires are or still in landfills or illegal dump it over there. Obviously tires can be reused, but how many do we still have in New Mexico? That's the big question that we as a cement plant, we want to ask, to really move forward with this project. Where can we use tires? There are several applications, but mainly the one that most is most economical and useful is use it as a fuel. Pretty much 57, 60% of the tires are used as a fuel. You can also use it as a part of the pig rounds, to front row, to use it in pig man, but the amount that we use is pretty small. I mean, you can go through that and review that list. Why we think that TTF, I mean, the Tire Derived Fuels, we can use it as a cement keon? As you know, it's a fuel that can give us heat value. One tire, or the heat value from a tire is around 15,000 BTU per pound. Coal is around 12,500, so pretty much is around 50% more than coal. But if you go down, I mean, for every 10 tires, we can save between 1 and 1.5 ton of coal, saves 10 gallons of fuels, or 20 pounds of steel, or iron ore. So those are the equivalents of a tire. TTF as a fuel keep tires out of the landfills. I mean, reducing stockpile, illegal dumping, all potential breedings or snakes, mosquitoes, everything that goes against the nature. So again, this is the reason why we consider our solution, the cement keon as a solution. Now, this is a United States map where you can identify in green all the cement plants that currently are using TTF. And in yellow or orange, the one they are right now pursuing that objective. If you see, I mean, Tejeras is in the middle of that red circle, that means that we can collect or use the tires they are around Albuquerque area. For example, right now, this is Pueblo, and you will see it, we are gonna start commissioning one system in April, next month. The difference in technology is gonna be shredded instead of one that we are gonna use, that is gonna be the whole tire. And I will explain that later. Continuing with on why the cement process is a solution, and I will tell you in detail. We use mainly four raw materials, calcium, alumina, iron, and silica. Calcium is what we know the limestone for the rock, pretty much 95, 96% of the material. Alumina, between 2, 3%, iron, between 1 and 1.5%, and silica is kind of a corrector, is between 0 to 5%. We grind those materials, we blend it in order to reduce the variation, the chemical variation, and we feed into a keon. This is Tejeras keon, this is probably the keon, and what we call the preheater. The material enters somewhere here around 60 degrees F, and around 15 seconds, heat up up to 1,100 F. After that, it's going down in this pipe, I'm gonna call it pipe, to achieve the 3,400 F. At that temperature, we destroy everything. You don't see smoke, you don't see anything. You destroy that to the 90.999 and keep going, whatever is in those tires. After that, you see the flame here, probably is kind of lava that you can see coming down. You cool down, you grind it to produce cement. How do we do that? I mean, we have environmental controls, and pretty much starting in 2015, we're gonna enter what we are calling the NCHA regulations, where we're gonna monitor and measure all the measures that are coming from the stack. So this is coming pretty much next year. What fuels do we use? Framally, coal, natural gas, and alternative fuels. We as Tejeras, 100% is coal, and our backup is natural gas. Going further and more technically, in the bottom, you see the temperature, those are in C, and Celsius degrees. What I wanted to explain here is whatever you have in the tire, inclusive the iron, is gonna react. So that means that we need to control the temperature in the keon. So don't think that we have a huge range of temperature to produce cement, no. It's pretty narrow that window that we need to achieve every minute in order to have the cleaner quality. So what I am arguing, there are the products of burning the tire is gonna combine somewhere here with the calcium, the alumina, and the silica. Just to tell you, I mean, that happens around this temperature between 1,200 and 1,300 C, that is around 2,800 F. In that way, we produce our TTF program is gonna meet cement. What are those benefits? I mean, obviously, we're gonna have, we're gonna replace fuel, and we're gonna save in coal. But also there are gonna be max reduction and sulfur reduction, what we call SO2 reduction. Two examples, if I recall correct, does the fire that happened years ago in California, where you cannot control that fire? Why? Because you start burning the tire, it's gonna start producing some kind of diesels or oils. So those oils go to the ground, you get them fired, so you have just a cycle. So you just need to leave those tires to completely get fired or get burned. This is our sister plant down in Santa Yucatán, Mexico, 20 miles south El Paso. They are putting whole tires shredded and whatever rubber product we have, like V-bells, they'll start burning in the steel wheel, whatever is that protection of that cover. And you don't see any black smoke coming out. So those are the two extremes of what's going on with the tires. And part of this is education, people think that when you burn a tire, you're gonna see the smoke coming out. So imagine that 2,800 F, just put a tire, it's gonna, 15 seconds, it's gonna be destroyed. Where we are at right now? We're working with the market, what we call the market identification phase is in progress, and part of this phase is this meeting, or the meetings that we start with the Associations of Counties. Also, we visit the solid waste in San Jose to expose this project. The permitting phase, we started, I would say, three months ago, more or less. So we are doing whatever needs to be done regarding to the air quality, regulations, permits, everything in order to run the tires. Right now, pretty much, we're almost finishing with the technology research. I gotta show you some pictures and what is that technology behind. We have two options, to feed those tires in the middle of the keon, or just tune it from the front end, and you will see it. Finally, as I mentioned, GCC public plant is gonna commission their system next month, so they are gonna be shredded. Why? It's just the type of keon, or the type of cement manufacturing technology that we have. Tejeras plant is 50's technology, or at least 10 years ago technology, so that makes a In detail, from that timeline, as you mentioned, we start with the government approach, with the solid waste, and also the New Mexico Association since maybe six months ago or I want to focus in that red line, that is, those are the permits. What we know right now, looks like it can take between 12 to 16 months. So it depends how fast we move, how fast this is accepted by the community, by their agency, and things like that. But for this, we need to work in the preliminary arrangements in order to get the permits. As soon as we get the permits, we can buy the equipment and install and commission. That's just a pretty overview, what's going on, or what is our timeline. Technologies. This is one technology that is patented by C-Mex. This is a keon. Imagine along a large pipe, 15 feet diameter, incline, a little bit like 3%, and you see, you will see the fire, the pipeline here. Outside, you will have kind of a high-speed roller, similar to the one that they use in the football to launch the ball, have you seen that one? Pretty much is that principle. So that, it will take the tire, the whole tire, and you tune it to maybe 30, 40, or 50 feet inside the keon, but it's the highest temperature. That is one technology that we are researching. I don't have both pictures because it's patented by C-Mex, so, but that's the principle. And we have, we are having conversation with them in order to see what it's gonna cost to have that lease or that royalty with them. Another technology that we call the main keon, is one of the providers' cadence. You see the injection of the tires in the middle of the keon. This is the chute that we use, and we can reach that combustion with air, with extra air. So the tire drops, when the chute isn't the top, drops to the keon and get burned. This is a little more detail, you have the conveying system, the tire, you weigh the tire here to know exactly how much fuel are you putting, because you need to remove or take out that field from the main burner. And you just drop it there. Real, real pictures. There's the chute in the keon during the fabrication. You see, this is a keon. There's a tire entering the keon, and the chute, you can see the red. At that point, the temperature is around between 1,800 to 2,000 F. The resident time in the long dry keon is gonna be around 45 to one hour. So it's a time that that tire is gonna be at the high temperature. In other words, we have one hour to program tire. And this is the extra air that we are planning to inject to reach that combustion and avoid any emissions go to the atmosphere. Now, numbers, and maybe this word getting more interesting, how many tires do we need? We need 700,000 for one keon. And let me explain, for every revolution that keon does, we put one tire. So multiply 90 revolutions per hour, times 24, times 30 days, times 12, that's a number. We have two keons, so at full capacity, we would need 1.4 million. What are the next steps or the questions to be answered? How can this benefit the New Mexico community? How many tires do we really have in New Mexico counties? And how many can we realistically recover? Some dimension for the profile. How this process is supported? EPA supports that the keons are the best technology or the best mean to burn tires. And those are referenced from EPA, for the Mohagan Disturbed Air Quality, and the Port Cement Association. Those are in the internet. And with this, I end the presentation. I appreciate your time. There is my contact information, and also my VP of cement manufacturing, who is leading this project. So for any question, any comments, we are open to receive your attention. I don't know if you have any questions about it, or go back and explain something more in detail.
Thank you very much for coming today, we appreciate it. I'm sure we have some questions, can we get the lights? Commissioner, I've seen you take notes through the whole thing, you have some questions?
Well, just, you know, I think this would be one heck of a project to have here. I think that'd be one heck of a project to have here in Grant County, get rid of some of these tires, you know, especially having the support of the EPA, what have you. What, have you already started looking in this actual area?
Or is this this presentation, so we can try and pull you into this area? What are we looking at?
We started this presentation up to the, as I mentioned, the New Mexico Association of Counties, to present the project. And based on that, started spreading the word to see what we can do in the future. I meant to answer your question.
Yes, that's fine.
And this was our county manager asked us through hell to come and make this presentation in more detail to you.
I got to see this at the Association of Counties last summer, and actually, I got to see it the first time, I think in Santa Rosa, with Randy, and then I got to see it again, was it this winter that you held it? No, it was in TRC, wasn't it?
Yes.
In TRC, last October. And I know how bad the tire problem is here, we have them in Everroyo, where landfill is full of them. So that's, I asked John to get them down, that's how they got here.
That picture of all those tires, you know, that's what our landfill looks like in the back of the landfill. If you don't drive around, you won't see it, but once you drive around the landfill, you definitely can see those tires. We've got to do something about that problem.
First of all, do you have any material that you could hand out? I mean, I take pretty good notes, but I'd really like to have some kind of material that you may have prepared. Do you have anything like that?
I think we are good. Is just a PowerPoint that we have?
Yeah, something less than the PowerPoint, just to hit the high points, do you have anything like that?
No, what I can do is...
Well, if you could then copy the PowerPoint to John, and maybe we could do something with that. You know, one of my concerns, without a doubt, we have a tire problem. You know, the whole state of New Mexico does. Everywhere you go, you see them. Everywhere you go, you see them either on top of trailers or stacked up somewhere. So, yes, it would be nice to find a place or some method to use these in a meaningful way. One of my concerns though would be the environment. It makes sure that we are considering the environment, and that's one of the things I'd be most interested in. That's one thing, getting rid of them and burning them. You may not see the smoke, but what else is going into the air? And so that's something I would be interested in too. So I understand that you're coming along with the process and such, and I would like for us to be kept in touch on how that process is going and who's looking at it. Okay? Thank you for your presentation. Very interesting.
You also invited to visit the power plant to see that next month. We can just schedule that. I mean, and let me go back to what I mentioned, emissions. Right now, because Cuervo is, Cuervo is a little ahead of this, they are measuring THC. That is total idle carbon. So you, you are going to measure whatever is coming there. So we need to control that by regulation, NOx, SOx, CO, oxygen and CO2. So pretty much we're going to measure a lot of that. Also, we're going to start measuring by NCH, mercury and HCl. That is coming for Tejeras for the 2015. Pretty much is in line to what we are expecting in the timeline. So for that part, I think we're going to recover for that. And again, you are welcome to visit our power plant or the plant that is in some of the Utes, 20 miles just from the pass. So, thank you.
Anything else? John?
I just wanted to, Commissioner Ramos was commenting about the tires there. One of the things too, at the landfill, the Environment Department has started going around the landfills and saying they don't want tires stored anymore. They're wanting them to be disposed of in some way. And so processes like this are very important too of the counties, because it gives us the ability to dispose of those tires, other than we've made walls out of them around here, but you can only make so many walls. I mean, you can't put them in the Arroyos anymore as protecting our bridges. I mean, there's things that we used to do with them, they're not allowing us to do, so we need alternatives, because new tires are being generated, used tires every day, as they said, and we just can't get rid of them.
So, what's the timeline on the Environment Department? Where are you setting? 10, 12 months out?
My knowledge is 12 to 18 months.
12 to 18 months to get a permit?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the residual out of a tire once it's burned?
Zero.
It's all gone. Everything's gone. And then are you cleaning that with scrubbers or? I know like when you have an asphalt plant, it'll go through a bag house or some type of scrubber or something. How are you cleaning the smoke up? Are you just burning it so hot that everything burns?
Let me explain. When that tire falls in the kiln at that temperature, pretty much you accelerate that combustion.
So, all goes away?
Not that fast, but...
It's quicker.
Yeah. Let me make this comparison. You guys have sometimes, how do you call it, the marshmallow put in the fire?
Okay.
You see that that marshmallow will start kind of getting melted. Well, the same thing when you launch a plastic bottle to the fire, soon you just kind of collapse. In that collapse, you start producing those diesel products. But at that temperature, you're going to melt those right away. So there is no time for that black smoke to come up. I mean, there's a reason, if you remember the picture, where they're going to inject extra air after that combustion in order to ensure that we have full combustion. And there is a reason for that. And then we refer to this to the normal here that you have at home. By regulation, you need to have, I think in the heater is around 12% oxygen and exit. In the kiln, to keep the quality, you need to keep between 1.9 to 2.2% of oxygen. Otherwise, the quality is not there. Okay? So...
I think I understand now. Can you use truck tires as well as car tires?
Yes, and we're looking for that to design that equipment based on the amount of truck tires. When I mean truck tires is, you have to be in the same page, is the 42 inches diameter tires. I think we can do it and we are in that research, that technology, because that is going to be the amount of tires against the investment that we need to do. But passing the tires, no problem.
Okay. And who would pay? Yeah, no, I don't think they need all truck tires. Maybe so. Who would pay for the transportation of the tires? Would we be responsible for that?
That we are looking at, talking to the New Mexico Solid Waste, how can we develop a model for that? And in part of the past conversations, we are welcome to receive the tires with no fee at the plant. And we're looking how to handle, how to cover that transportation for any plates.
Okay. Yes, John?
So if we had the ability to transport them right now out of our solid waste authority, because we need to get rid of our tires, can you accept them at the plant right now and start storing them?
No, because we don't have the permit.
Okay.
That's part of that logistics that we are trying to develop as soon as possible in order to start moving, accepting tires, moving that logistics and preparation for that. But apparently, we can't receive any tire.
Okay. I want to move to questions from other electeds and directors. Anybody? Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, from a standpoint, from a fire standpoint, in 2007, you know, we had the Quail Ridge Fire and there was a property under that, tons of tires stored. That caught on fire and we could not put that out. So the amount of, you know, combustibles that were in the air for those 24 to 36 hours, I mean, we put just about everything we had and it did not go out. So eventually we came to, you know, trying to dig a trench and burying it. So, you know, in that sense, from a fire standpoint, because if we do get a fire at the landfill like we might have had last year, I mean, we're looking at a lot of tires and trying to put that out is almost impossible.
Didn't they have a big fire in Socorro that's still burning that they are unable to put out?
Yeah.
I think they buried it, but I think it's still...
They buried it in a lot of smaller, smaller...
Do I have any questions from the audience? This is kind of tricky, because we got to, you got to move over and let them ask their question, then move back over and answer. But come on up here. Introduce yourself for everybody. I know you.
Tony, Timmy, from the Office of Sustainability for the town of Silver City. And I wanted to update you on what's going on at Southwest Solid Waste, starting Wednesday, actually. I wrote a grant for recycling and legal dumping from the NMED that was awarded last year that will pay for transportation for tires to Denver City, Texas, where they're going to start shredding them and mixing them with asphalt. So the grant will cover from now through June to transport as many tires as we can from the landfill to Denver City. But it's, obviously, there's going to be more tires coming in, so it's not a sustainable plan. So, and hopefully, you know, we can work out something that the tires can go to Tejeras.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else from the audience have a question? All right. I guess not. So we appreciate you guys coming down. Like Judge Hall, Commissioner Hall said, clean air is important, but getting rid of our tires is important too. We want, we want everything. We want both. So, that's right. So please keep us in the loop. You can stay in contact with John. And once you get to the point where you need some support from counties, I think you'll probably be able to count on us, because we do have a tire problem. I know there's, there's tires on private property, there's tires in Arroyos, we have plenty of tires.
Tires in our forests.
And I really appreciate y'all coming.
Can we send out these cards?
Yeah, you guys have cards here? Yeah. You have a pile of them over there? Denise, grab us all. I have a set, so you don't need to get me one. So thank you very much. And for those of you guys that don't know, Mr. Stanton was the Attorney General a few years ago, so he's, thank you very much for coming.
I heard you saying a few years ago, because it seemed like it was territorial day yesterday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we're gonna...
That was interesting.
Yes, it was. We're going to go review the March 13th, 2014 regular meeting agenda. John, you want to start with this beast of a book?
Yeah. Although the book is thick, the agenda is not that long. We'll start with the financial reports. The big piece of your book is the expenditure listing. We've not had an expenditure listing in front of the commission since January 6th because of legislative session not having the meeting. And last meeting, we had an issue printing the report because of, we had an upgrade done into our financial package, which they've gotten that complete. So this report is from January 6th through March 13th. So that's why it is so large. It includes four full payrolls and then we have some special payrolls that are small payrolls when employees ask to get their checks early, or we have something specific that we need to pay an employee. Some of the major expenditures will be that we've got a couple of payments to Southwest Solid Waste Authority. They're about $40,000, $35,000 to $40,000 a month. So there's, there's a couple of those in there. We have our insurance that's due every January, which is our liability insurance, the multi-line piece to the Association of Counties, which is $227,928. We have the law enforcement pool insurance, which is the other piece of insurance we get from the Association of Counties, and that is $265,393. Because you, because we chose to switch out of the state risk management pool and we went out on our own for our insurance, health insurance for our employees, as part of the agreement with the state to try and make people stay into their pool, they had a, we had to send a three-month run-out fees for them as well as the buyout fees. So that was $133,806.20. And in the presentation Mr. Rydeski gave you when we started, even though we had to make those payments, we would still see, should see a savings this year of about $90,000, which now we found out will possibly be more, because we were anticipating most of our employees taking a PPO plan, which most of them took an HMO plan, which is a smaller cost to the county. And the state, after we switched, came back and told us that in July of this year, they were going to increase all the rates for insurance in the pool by another 15%, which we hadn't calculated into our savings already. So we have an additional 15% of savings over our previous policy, even though we had to pay that buyout. So it was in our best interest to do it at that time, because the buyout was always going to be there, no matter even if we waited till July. We have a couple of our payments for our insurance, which to Presbyterian is about $150,000 a payment, which those happen, that's a month, so you've got two months of payments in there at $150 to Presbyterian, which is our current insurance. We've had a brush truck bought by the PA Fire Department, bought a brush truck under one of their agreements through the Houston Galveston area contract. And that was $139,473. And then we had a payment on the Hurley Sewer Project. That was where we were getting rid of the current lagoon system and getting on to a collection system to force into the Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Facility. And that was $156,781.75. That is a project that has been completed, it's up and running currently. We're now just working on drying out the lagoons so that we can remove the material in the lagoons and reclaim that portion to finish off those as part of the contract. That was part of the whole grant.
How are we reclaiming that money though?
These funds, we spend this, well, and this money, as it comes in, the way this grant is set up, it's a loan grant through the rural USDA. The way the process is, is the contractor does their work, they bill us, we submit that billing to our USDA. Then our USDA wire transfers the money to Grant County, and as soon as we're transferred the money, then we cut the check to the contractor. So we're basically a pass-through for this funding. At the beginning of the process, because there was some hiccups with the RUSDA, we ended up having to make a payment before the money came to us, because the contractor was graciously waiting. He's expended this money and it's a local contractor in Silver City and, and so he was having to wait a long time for the RUSDA to prove. That process has gotten streamlined now, and so we do receive the funds first and then we cut the check, just in the check to the contractor. So like I said, we're done with the pump system, it's up and running currently, and so we're now just drying out the lagoons so that we can remove the material, the sludge from the lagoons that needs to be removed and cap those off. And those are the major expenditures. And the item is, like I said, the reason why it is large is because of the number of payrolls, the length of time, this is two and a half.
Three?
It's, yeah. Very large report, but that's the major portions of that. In your, it's not on the agenda, we're going to add it for Thursday. I was waiting, because I had a problem with the report that I ran out. Tyler, they got that fixed for me. You have in your packet the financial report for January. I'll go over the, starting with the general fund. This is as of January 31st, 2014. As of July 1st, 2013, the general fund had $2,451,424, with year-to-date revenues of $6,46,476. Transfers done of $39,279. Operating expenditures of $1,485,860. The salaries and benefits year-to-date are $3,550,765. Gives a cash balance at January 31st of $3,421,997. With projected revenues, transfers and expenditures through June 30th, 2014 of a negative $1,42,731. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $2,379,266, less the required reserve of $2,105,342. Leaves a surplus at June 30th of $2,073,924. On the next page, you have the budgeted revenues. We've collected 57.7% of the budgeted revenues by January, the end of January. On the third page is the transfers. We've done 2.98% of the budgeted transfers. This is where I spoke to you, that we usually do these closer to the end of the year, as we get a firm number on how much revenues have come into those departments, so we only transfer what is needed to cover them through the end of the year. The next is the road department. As of July 1st, 2013, the road department had a balance of $267,657, with year-to-date revenues of $367,583. There's been no transfers done at the road department. Operating expenditures of $183,004. Salaries and benefits of $729,422. Leaves a cash balance at January 31st of $277,185. Negative at June, as, as predictions of transfers, revenues, expenditures through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $414,141. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $136,955, less the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus at June 30th of $6,020. Next is the corrections fund. As of July 1st, 2013, the correction fund started with $407. They have year-to-date revenues of $498,471. Year-to-date transfers are zero. Operating expenditures year-to-date are $433,920. Salaries and benefits year-to-date are $1,122,554, with a cash balance at end of January of a negative $1,057,596. With projected transfers, expenditures and revenues through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $1,094,497. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $36,901. And we're not required to carry any reserve in that fund. And we're not required to carry any reserve in that fund.
It's kind of low there, huh?
$36,000?
No, $407.
Well, we're only required to carry zero.
Yeah.
So, we were above it.
I've never seen it that low.
We were above the required.
Clicked in my brain after we finished the expenditure report, and you were talking about insurance and how we save by going out to a private carrier from the state. Have we ever checked to make sure that the New Mexico Association of Counties is pricing our liability and workers' comp insurance properly?
We have never... In the time that I have been here, as a county manager, the county has never chosen to gone out for RFP to look at our workers' comp and our multi-line and law enforcement When I first started, we had some bad losses before I got here that they were charging us for, because they look at three years back, they told me when I first started. So, they increased us 25% each year, which is a lot when you're at $270,000. And then, as soon as those three years were out of the picture, they decided they would look for five years, so they could still include those. And we've got... Our loss ratio at the county under the workers' comp over a 10-year period is 40%. So, that means that we spend 40% of the premium that we send to the Association of Counties is all that we're expending for losses at the county under workers' comp. The rest is money that's kept by the insurance company. Under the multi-line and law enforcement, the law enforcement is the one that we get hit the hardest, because that's law enforcement and detention center, and those are where our biggest claims come out of, because of the nature of the business. That, I think, is around about a 70% loss ratio, and the multi-line is down around a 30% to 40% loss ratio. So, what those numbers say is, if you looked at the history of Grant County, it would actually be cheaper for us to self-insure ourselves and pay the first $300,000 of loss, because we're only paying less than $150,000 of loss a year. But then you would have those instances where at the jail, one instance can cost us $1 million, and so you don't want to be under that. I know Lee County has their own multi-line. They are not part of the association for that, and they are currently looking at workers' comp, which they were gonna send me over their RFP, so I could see what they were doing. It's something we can do. We can go out for RFP. You don't have to change if you don't get good results from it, but you could look at it. We're being lumped in with about 28 other counties, I think, are part of the multi-line Some of those counties have greater than 100% loss, and that's what our money's going to pay for.
Okay.
You know, they were fighting on the whole Soul Community Provider. They didn't want to pay for another county. But when you look at the insurance pool, Burnaleo County, for an example, is... Pays about $1.7, $1.8 million into the insurance pool, and they have a loss ratio of about So, that's 30% of $1.8 million that somebody else is making up in the pool.
Sure. It just dawned on me that we hadn't done that. I think it might be prudent to...
It doesn't affect anything.
Take it to look at it.
I mean, I want to be a good member of the Association of Counties. That's not the point. And if they're pretty close, I think... But, you know, I didn't swear an oath to the Association of Counties.
No. It's the same as the state risk management pool. We got in because we thought it was a better deal at the time, and as they continued to raise rates, because you're paying for the losses of other municipalities and counties that are in that pool, and we didn't have those losses. As we came out, I think our loss ratio under our health insurance was around a 75% loss ratio. So, that means we were paying an extra 25% in that they were never paying out. So, that's why we chose to go on our own, and we're seeing a savings. So, we can definitely go out for RFP. The Association of Counties can respond to it.
I don't think that's something we can decide today, but it's something that we can put on...
Yeah, and it doesn't bind you. As soon as you go out for RFP, you can choose to reject all bids and stay with the Association of Counties where you're currently at. But that's one thing that is doable to look at and see what's out there, because supposedly some of these counties are saving a lot of money by going out on their own instead of being in the pool. And if Burnaleo County pulls out of the pool, that really devastates the pool, is what they think, the Association of Counties has always said. But the way I look at it is, they're putting in $1.8, but they're taking out greater than $2 million. I don't know how that devastates us. It actually saves us money for them to leave the pool. So, I... Yeah, I just don't... I don't understand, and so...
When you're selling that loss, you gotta sell a lot more to make it up.
Yeah.
All right, let's move to new business.
Uh, new business, we have a presentation by Margaret Begay to give her yearly report on the Grant County Surveillance Program. As you know, that's a program the commissioners have put some money aside, the prior commission, and this commission has continued to do it, to fund programs outside of us having a juvenile detention facility, ankle bracelets, and the surveillance. So, she'll give her report on that. The next item is one I wish to speak to about. We had the presentation on the designation of Members LLC as a film liaison. They came and presented it the last commission meeting. Since that point in time, we've also received... I received the information from them that I've passed on to the commissioners of the letters of support they've gotten from other communities. I forwarded those emails to you, as well as the criteria for choosing that they included. And then, we've also had a request put in by the Grant County... Silver City and Grant County Chamber of Commerce to provide that film liaison service to the commission. So, I don't know what you want to do, if you want to keep that as an agenda item and go forward, or if you want to do some other process to try and get interest.
I know that the guys from Members LLC are here today. Do you guys have any questions of them?
And I know...
And they did their presentation. Well, Scott Terry's here from the chamber.
You don't have to have additional affirmation. You've heard your presentation. I'm, you know, I'm ready for Thursday to move on it, you know?
Okay.
One way or the other.
So, we'll change that line item to say... Do you want to change that to say the letter designating a film liaison? Because we, at the time when we were preparing the agenda, we only had one interested party, which was Members LLC, and now we have two interested parties. And so, I just...
Well, I kind of feel that we need to just go ahead and move on with it. We had a good presentation. I know they're representing a lot of areas in the southwest, and I think we need to continue to consider.
So, we'll leave that. That's it.
Okay. The next item is an intergovernmental transfer of a K-9 unit equipment to Sierra County. We spoke about this a little bit at the last... This is... The sheriff has a K-9 unit. We have a unit for our vehicle. We have a kennel and some other apparatus for the K-9 and the K-9 officer. Sierra County has expressed interest to purchase this animal from us, as well as the equipment. The sheriff's been talking with the sheriff up there. They have an appropriate unit that will fit this cage that we have in our unit. They have a... It's in a Dodge Charger. And so, they have a Charger. The sheriff and I spoke this morning about if it's approved, he would have that sheriff send down his vehicle and pay the expense of taking it to the local person that does our installs, and remove the cage from our vehicle and have it installed in theirs. And then, we have the backseat and the cage and apparatus that were in our vehicle when we stripped it to put the cage in, will be put back in our vehicle. So, that'll be part of the cost as well, above the cost they've said to give for the dog, right, Sheriff? And so, they're looking at paying us $4,500. This was paid for grant monies before, so those funds will go back in the sheriff's to be used for equipment, anything he needs for his vehicles, for his officers, which comes at a good time, because we're buying vests for all the officers, so this will help make up some of that cost. They're buying new vests. It's time to replace our bulletproof vests. And so, that's what we're intending to do there. I'll get a letter from the sheriff for Thursday's meeting for your packet that'll detail what he is... The transcript between him and the sheriff of Sierra County. We did put it out throughout the state, and they're really the only ones. We looked locally at Silver City PD first. They just didn't have the capabilities to take the dog and take care of the dog. And currently, we have the dog boarded, so it's costing us money to board it, so we're trying to get it into somebody's hands that can use it. We don't have an officer trained to use the dog anymore, and so that's why we're trying to transfer it out.
The captain met with me last week and went through it thoroughly, so I've got a good understanding of it. I understand why we're doing it, and it sounds like it's the best thing we can do.
Yeah. And we'll get the letter from the sheriff for Thursday in your books that just details all the... Everything, all the information about the transfer. But Mr. Zamora has already sent the letter to the state, starting that process, so that we can... If the commission chooses to approve, we can get that process going, because there's 30 days that the state has to respond to us before we can transfer the asset, Department of Finance Administration, because of the value of the asset. And so, we've already started that clock with them to get prior approval, that if the commission approves it, maybe we can speed this up past 30 days, so we can get that dog down to them and start using it. They're really excited.
And we're paying boy and fees.
Yes, and we can get it out of the kennel that we have. Another item under new business, the sheriff has handed me, just received his application for the law enforcement protection funds. He just gave it to me before the meeting. They've been working on it. What this is, is each year, he gets paid money based on our population. He gets $20,000, and based on the number of officers we have, he gets another $23,400. For $43,400, what he does is he puts $33,000 of this into purchasing law enforcement equipment and apparatus, and $10,000 of it goes to planning and training, which he uses this $10,000 to send his officers to all types of trainings throughout the state, and that are mandatory trainings for his department. So, he's just given it to me. We'll add that to the agenda, because it's due up by the end of March, so we'd rather get it on this meeting than the last meeting. So, we'll be adding that under new business. It'll just be that law enforcement protection fund. It's something we do every year. Nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed is that we have one less officer on it this year, because he's retired, that the sheriff gave the plaque to. So, that's the only difference. Instead of 40, we have 39 officers this year on the law enforcement protection funds, because we haven't filled that position yet. The next is the resolution that we do each year for the county-maintained roads. Every year, we're required to send up our road-maintained inventory. We have maps. We have... The commission is willing to work, look at. There's a list that comes with it in your book. In your packet, you have the list of the roads. We currently have 695.43 miles of road. This does not include the miles that we're looking at at those new subdivisions that we're looking at doing the improvement agreements on, because we have not done those and taken them over yet. So, that mileage will probably be over 700,000 miles next... Or 700 miles. Feels like 700,000 miles to Earl's group. We got five guys out there blading these roads. But we'll be over 700 miles for next year by... If we get all those subdivision, those improvement districts completed, because that is more than the five miles of road. The next is the resolution authorizing execution delivery of Colonial Infrastructure Fund project. This is the infrastructure project that Anthony put in for last year, the Colonialists. We finally have received the agreements from the finance authority. Ms. Robinson has looked at them. They're ready to be approved by the commission. We have a resolution that will be approved, authorizing the execution and delivery of the documents, so we can start that process, which is the drainage improvements, engineering for the drainage and road improvements in the North Hurley area. It's been a long time waiting. Anthony's worked on this. Engineers Inc. has helped put together the application, so everybody's ready to go and get that project done. It's just that's how slow the state is moving. This is one that was approved last year and actually is... And we actually have submitted our application for the Colonialists Infrastructure Fund for this year, for the Rosedale Road project that we did at last meeting, prior to us getting the agreement for last year's project. So, hopefully, that one will move a lot quicker. Item H is... Do we have two resolutions for the road inventory, Earl, or just one?
I don't think that other one should be a resolution. That one should send up to the state to verify and...
That's just... Oh, okay. So, that'll be moved... That's just the certify, that's just the letter?
Yeah. It needs to be signed by the commission and the chair. Chairs, but I don't think it needs to be a resolution.
Okay.
That's 14 and 1/2.
So, H... Yeah, so H, when you do the resolution, that letter will be part of item F. So, we'll remove H. The... Then the last item is the Cliff Fairgrounds Exhibit Hall addition. We've gone out to bid for that addition, which what that addition was, was the bathrooms. The bathrooms, a storage, and a kitchen area attached to the large exhibit building that we have out there next to the covered slab. The bids have gone out. The bids have been opened. You have... I've given you a letter from our architect on the project that he's reviewed them. They met the criteria. He's... The bids were received. They were over his initial estimated project budget, which, however, though they met the criteria that's needed for the bidding process, and so he's... His recommendation is to award the bid in like a county into a negotiation for some cost savings in it. He's already looked at them and has found some cost savings in the bid that would get us into the budget. And so, that's what his letter that he has given to you is to recommend that we award it to that lowest bidder, with him entering into... Myself and the architect will enter into negotiations to do some value engineering and cost savings in that, to get that project within our budget.
So, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Hall for all of his work and on getting all this done up to this point. I think it's gonna be a wonderful addition. And I was wondering if one of the... Either of you know when the expected completion date would be?
It would be before the fair.
Yeah.
And if it's anything like the big bond, it could be the day before the fair, but it will be before the fair. It's all I can guarantee.
Yeah. You're gonna guarantee that? All right.
I guarantee there will be a building before the fair.
All right.
So...
The building's already there.
The new addition. There'll be an addition.
You're trying to fly it out of this thing.
Yeah. I wanted to be slappy. I guarantee there will be a fairgrounds for the fair.
All right. Can we get some of those four heads?
So, no, but I think it's a... It's not a large project, and it's mainly that outside structure. It's a steel building, and so the architect has no reservation that it'll be done before the fair. And I'm thinking, he's thinking a couple of months before the fair, but I can't guarantee it.
Every lady I bump into in Walmart thinks that having flushing potties is gonna be absolutely wonderful.
Absolutely. Well, yeah. And there's not gonna be... I mean, it's not gonna be a 10,000-square-foot building of flushing toilets. They're limited.
If they have a flushing potty, they're gonna be happy. Okay. Can I get a motion to take a short recess?
Hello?
Have those favorite six posts in on?
Aye.
Stand in recess. Call back to order the board of county commissioners' regular... Work session, and we're ready to move into county reports. And this morning, I believe we'll start with Brian Cunningham from the hospital.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Short report for you guys today, since we met two weeks ago and had some discussion. But we do have... We have had a board meeting since then, so we have some updates on our finances that is always of specific interest. I had told you at the end of December, we had gotten to a break-even point from our $9 million loss as of the previous June. But as of January, we did lose a bit of money. We lost about $187,000, and that brought us below our break-even point, obviously, to about negative $800,000 for the year. We expected that. It was due predominantly to the fact that the Soul Community Provider funds, as we well know by now... funds, as we well know by now, ended December thirty-first. So January was the first month where we didn't receive any supplemental funds from the state. We expected that, we know that we are going to get some retro funds, hopefully, in the near future. We're waiting for the governor to take her pen, or not, to Senate Bill 268, and that should happen sometime this week, and we'll have a better idea of where that, where that goes. But we have positioned the hospital very well over these six or seven months. We are sitting, as of the end of January, at a hundred-and-nineteen days of cash, so we will be able to weather the, this couple of months of this storm, with no supplemental funds from the state. But even when they start to come, as we know, you guys know very well, it's going to be less and less each year. Approximately two years ago, we received about eighteen million dollars from the state. In this present year, approximately ten million dollars, and in the future years, it's probably going to be five million dollars, around there. So that has stepped down pretty steeply, as far as supplemental funds from the state. We're doing everything we can, from an organizational standpoint, to continue to lean out our service lines, make sure all of our processes are high-quality, but also the most efficient they can be. And we're looking at all of our service lines to be as efficient as possible. And some of the, some of the results of that are, in this current year, we have approximately sixty paid FTEs less than we did last year at this time. We've saved over three-point-seven million dollars in operating expenses by reducing our expenses. That's things like labor and supplies, and utilities, those kinds of things. So we continue to work in that direction, but there's much more to be done. And after, you know, the governor either signs or modifies Senate Bill 268, we will obviously be having some dialogue with our commissioners, our county manager, our board, collaboratively, to see, you know, what we can do further creatively, to make sure we can maintain as many of the hospital services as possible. So that is to come. Other news besides that, we're in the middle of our construction project, replacing our linear accelerator, we've been talking about that for the last several months. It's happening actually right now. So we are, have shut down our radiation therapy services, as of February twenty-eighth, and that construction will last for approximately ninety days, and then we'll be back up and running with a new radiation therapy machine, that is really high-tech. We'll be able to do more cancer services for our community, but it's just a little bit of downtime. The last update I have for you, we've talked about in the past, that we are developing and implementing a interventional pain management service in the hospital. We've hired a physician for that, his name is Dr. Light. There's going to be a lot of discussion and marketing around this program, but all the contracts are signed over a month ago, and we're on track to have that service started April first. So just in a few weeks, we will be rolling out that service. There's not an interventional pain specialist anywhere close, I think the closest one maybe is in El Paso. It'll be a great, a great service for our community. We have a lot of, lot of our community members in chronic pain. This is going to really help our community. That's all I have as far as updates, and I would stand for questions.
Yeah, just, I'm just really concerned about this continuous drop, and supplemental money being less and less, and how, it's just, it's scary. And I just, I have a real concern. And so, I really hope that we can find ways, you know, at one point, you know, you and I talked, and we talked about, for lack of better words, going into it, the money that was left on the table, and trying to correct it, are we, how far along are we there?
At the time, we were talking about, we were talking about the revenue cycle, there's a lot of components of our revenue cycle. One component is coding. Services get delivered, people document, then it goes into coding, and specific codes are attached to everything that was done, and then it goes to billing. In coding at the time, we were up to about twenty million dollars in cases stuck in coding, because we were down coders and some other issues, and that was the area we were focusing initially. Well, that number is down now to four to five million. So we have reduced that down, and that's about where it should be averaged, waiting to be coded, three to five million in, so we're right about where we need to be. So that fifteen million, from twenty million down to five, has been dumped into our billing cycle next. So we should start to see that additional revenue coming in. Now, not all fifteen million comes back, that's what gets billed, we collect only about thirty, thirty-five percent of that. But still, three, four, five million dollars over these next couple of months should get pulled into our revenue cycle. But there's still a lot of other elements in our revenue cycle that we need to address, so that we do collect...
Going in and out.
Yes, that's a significant area of focus. But, you know, your concerns about the dropping supplemental funds, there's a bunch of things that we're doing, many, many, many areas we're addressing, within the four walls of the hospital. But more than ever, at this time, it's not just about what you do within your four walls. There's a lot of activity that needs to change, as far as how hospitals have done business, in their four walls. And we're most certainly heavily focused, and, you know, in our next update, we can give you an indication of all the work that we're doing around there, and the results so far.
I don't want to see that, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that for you. We're preparing a presentation for our board right now, and we can roll that out to you guys also. But more than ever right now, it's, it takes activity outside your four walls, and this is where we are really fortunate as an organization, to have a community that supports us, and a commission that is so well-informed about these issues, and supportive, understands, you know, the economic impact of the hospital. And, you know, thank you last month, I'll thank you again for your support in the legislative session, and specifically, Mr. Star, Mr. Starry, and Chairman Caston's work. They're so well-informed about what these issues are, we're in a real good position to collaboratively look at other creative ideas to support the hospital. And we'll be doing that as soon as the governor does whatever she's about to do. That'll give us the information we need to make further decisions. So we're outside of our four walls also, with our community, with our commissioners, and also our physicians, like never before. We need to partner and collaborate with our physicians in ways that really haven't been done in this area. So it's really a comprehensive approach to address this. From eighteen to ten to five million dollars, that's a lot of money to make up in a very short period of time. So I want you to know, appreciate your concern, we're extremely concerned within our organization, and working extremely hard within and outside of our four walls, to continue to deliver the services to this community.
Thank you, and thank your staff for their hard work. That hospital is so, so important to this community, and to the southwestern New Mexico.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's something, something that's very important to mention also, there's a misconception out in the public, that the supplemental sole community provider funds and indigent funds are like a, just a, just a handout to the hospital. And they're not. They pay, they pay the hospital for services rendered to individuals that are deemed indigent in the county. And the county is responsible for those payments. So it's important, it's not a handout. It's, it's paying for services that have been performed.
I appreciate that point. You know, hospital industries, unlike most industries, we are mandated to care for individuals that enter our institution. So you come to the ER, we can't and shouldn't ever refuse to deliver services. It's not how it works, obviously, at Walmart or other places. It's part of our mission, we take it very seriously, but obviously, that puts us in a bind financially, so I appreciate that Chairman Caston, it's not a handout, it's, we are delivering services, many services, and either not being paid or being significantly underpaid for them. And this is one way that counties and state, and at the federal level, hospitals are supported because of that fact.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Alright, thanks Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go to work.
And I think we'll move on to Mike.
Chair, February, March, two thousand fourteen. Item number one, policies and procedures, the status remains the same. Item number two, the detention facility update, there's been one change on the report that I submitted to, there, we do have two current vacancies at the current time of the detention facility. Item number three, our assessments are continuing, so the status remains the same with that. Item number four, on our training update, Sergeant Josh Delindo recently completed the field training instructor course. That course is in eight weeks. Of course, and it's for our newly hired detention officers, whenever they come on. We have put that curriculum together, and we put them through this course, and prepare them for the, for the position that they have applied for, and they're currently working. Under this particular field training course, we're also exploring the possibility of putting together, when Sergeant Delindo went up there, I asked him to look into it, possibly putting together a physical training, testing portion for newly hired employees, and also those that are applying for the position, including that is part of the hiring process. And then, after the hiring process, make it a part of the field training, that they have to meet the physical testing requirements as part of that also. So we're looking, exploring that. Officer Salgado and Officer Placencio were sent to Luna County to attend defensive tactics training, and receive their certification. Some upcoming training, upcoming training will include Lieutenant Aguirre and Sergeant Delindo attending the recertification for the control force as instructors. That way, they can come back and they can, they can help recertify all the officers in control force, utilizing them instead of having to go out and pay for the training. Sergeant Hardesty and Sergeant Sarah will attend first-line supervision training, and they're the, they're two of our sergeants, the only two that are left remaining that have not attended the first-line supervisors course, so I want to get into that. Item number five, and the intervention, the inmate support program, the subgroup is going to meet next week, and we're going to plan out strategies to see what we can do to continue with the program without any funding. We're just going to see what we can put together. And just continue, possibly starting with the detention facility and training detention officers, working with the inmates while they're in the facility, and then preparing them whenever they get ready for release, and have the other providers pick them up after they're released from the facility. On March thirteenth, I'll be attending the detox meeting, Commissioner Hall will be at the Hila Regional, and they've asked me to come and provide the detox subgroup with some alcohol and substance abuse statistics, and also they've asked if our medical provider, Rita Torres, the CEO, would be interested in, in also helping out the detox committee, and submitting her information and stuff. I know that she's done some work with other detox facilities and other detox programs that are in her, in other facilities that she's worked with, so she does have some experience. So I've put the word out to her and see if she would help with the program, help with the committee. And the last word I got is that she, she absolutely would. So I'm going to see what I can do to get her involved in the detox committee. Item number six, on our recognition awards program, what I'd like to do is ask the commissioners in our April meeting if we could get the remainder of the detention officers who were not able to attend to have their badge presentation, and also administer the oath to them. So extend that invitation again, if we can get them over here, we'll see if we can get the remainder of them part of the April meeting. And thank you for what you did for us. The officers were, you know, they were very impressed, and they were very grateful that you guys did that for them, and I appreciate it also. Item number seven, our detention statistics, the average daily population for the month of February through March, and the reason I do that is I try and give you the most accurate statistics I can between the commission meetings. So that's why it entails February and March, so give you an accurate, some accurate figures on what's happening at the detention facility. So for February, March two thousand fourteen, the average daily population was seventy-four, which is thirteen more than last month. The high population of males was fifty-nine, which is one more than last month. High population females was fifteen, is four less than last month. For the February, March two thousand fourteen, there were seventy-four inmates, twelve more than last month incarcerated in facilities, and the statistic shows a slight increase in activity. Monthly agency totals for February, March were Silver City Police Department at seventy-three, New Mexico State Police at eighteen, Grand County Sheriff's Department at thirty-three, Santa Clara fourteen, Baird PD had one, and Hurley PD had two, and adult probation had one. Western had zero. The detention facility conducted ten district court transports, Metro Court Division one had fourteen, Metro Court Division two had five, Silver City Municipal Court had eight, Santa Clara Municipal Court had zero, Baird Municipal Court had one, and Hurley Municipal Court had zero. We had zero medical transports as compared to one for last month. Total number of all transports for the month of February, March, thirty-eight, as compared to seventy-seven for the last month. Our jail utilization and occupancy for number of inmates sentenced were fourteen, unsentenced were fifty-seven, hours in custody is forty-three, four thousand three hundred and ninety-seven-point-eighty-eight. Offense levels, there were thirteen felonies, thirty-three misdemeanors, and then probation violations and warrants total seventy-four, for a total of one hundred and twenty. The total hours in custody was fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-seven hours, and the average length of stay is eight-point-six-nine days. The offense level sentencing show there's a decrease as compared to last month, in the, as far as the sentencing compared. Stand for any questions?
Any questions? Doesn't look like it, Mike.
We renamed that detox organization. We renamed the detox organization, you know, we're working up the business plan, it's now the Adult Substance Abuse Continuum.
That's a better name.
I have to, I have to put it my, focus, I don't remember. Detox was easier. It's called Adult Substance Abuse Continuum. Which makes more sense?
It does.
It's where all commissioners go after them.
Yeah.
Retired commissioners.
Ten before.
Okay, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll start with Cobra Communions, we still working on the routes to Hila Cliff, been doing that this week, just a miscommunication last week, and weren't able to get that done. The other thing is, working with the director, putting a schedule together for her and the system director, about our time here in Silver City. Be traveling to Demi and look at that operation over there, and make sure that, how that operation is working. Got two vacancies still, trying to get those filled. Other than that, that's all I have, as far as Cobra Communals, just continuing to work. Again, people think it's, they want to drive the bus, and it's just a small bus, but it's a little more than that. So, I think it boils down to training, better training, and so we're working at that, and we're going to try to perfect it as best we can in the near future. DWI program, also again, talking about teen maze, it's going to be at the Conference Center, April eighth and ninth. That's about bringing young people in from the schools, teaching them the consequences for drinking, driving, texting, drug abuse. So, I'm hoping that Cindy can have her, herself and her staff come and explain a little more at the next meeting if possible, just to give you a breakdown, and like to invite you all to that, to walk through it, and just to see what it's about for our youth. Public works, continuing to work at the park, Baton Park, again, they're doing some upkeep, bringing in, knowing that the baseball season is about to start here pretty quick. Doing all the weeds, making sure that the restrooms are working properly, putting some new dirt on the fields, grading, getting the weeds all out, painting some of the radiance over there, again, painting the bathrooms, fix those up. So just a continued process out there, trying to make sure that the park, but I do want to ask the public, just, you know, it's your park, take care of it, watch your kids from throwing rocks at doors and trying to kick indoors, and tipping away at some of the stucco on the concession stands. So, it's another use for the community, it's been rented out consistently, especially the big building, the Fort Baird building, again, there was some new paint put on the floors, and it's just a work in progress with it. A lot of people use it, so you're going to get some of those damages, and we're just hoping that we can maintain that.
Does Billy take care of the language?
Yes, sir. Let's see, where are we at here? Senior program, no problems with that, Terry's doing a good job. We did have an evaluation by the New Mexico Aging Group that came in. John and I met with the LFC team that came in just to... the LFC team that came in just to ask questions about the senior program, how the county, you know, what their goals are, as far as going forward, John might be able to talk a little bit more about that, we met with that team, and so everything's running well. From a fire standpoint, been doing a lot of training and attended the symposium that Silver City Grand County had Friday and Saturday of this week, talking about prepare and ask, ready, set, go, just making sure people understand that they got to do their part along with, you know, the fire service, because, you know, the only way that we can protect homes and do our part as firefighters is if the community does their part on some of the issues that we have, whether you call it ready, set, go, defensible space, you know, all of those other things. You know, a lot of people concentrate on fire hazards within the house, you know, smoke detectors and toasters and all that, but they don't look outside the window and know that that's, there's some issues out there that they got to deal with. So we're moving forward with that. I did get the grant application in with the soil and water conservation for upgrading the countywide protection plan. As we go forward with that, I'll be having meetings with the communities around the county to see what the fuel reduction projects are in those counties, I mean, in those areas, and hopefully we can put, update the 2009 plan, hopefully in 2015. We do that, I think it sets us up a lot easier to get some grants through the federal government. So for fuel reduction, helping residents out, so been doing that. Yesterday, I attended a training with US Forest Service, they brought in an incident command team one, an ICT team one into Grant County, and met with all the districts, the wilderness district, Silver City District, Camado Ranger District, the Glenwood Ranger District, Tucson Electric was also here, because as you know, we have electrical lines in our forest, and they're a hazard just as well as anything else. It was a great, it was an all-day training, so looking at ways to mitigate some of our areas in the wilderness, in the Silver City Ranger District, Glenwood, and all the areas that, you know, the fire service has a responsibility for. So we met, get some scenarios about what we thought of our high-risk areas as well. I'll be meeting with Gabe Hogan, Staff Officer for Silver City, and what our protocols really are as far as having a fire in Grant County, anywhere around Grant County, and what we're going to do along with Silver City and Silver City Fire, myself and Gilbert Hogan. So the other thing, I spoke to Ms. Ogas from N S A, I know she was here at the last commission meeting, talked to me about getting my information, so they do have the ability to get animals out. I think Gilbert helped them through a grant, bought them a tight trailer that they can move animals very quickly. The question is, is whether we have our information. I know the sheriff, you guys will probably be at the forefront of evacuation, and so if we can contact them the minute we believe evacuation is needed, so that they can put their team together. Whether we, whether we're thinking about evacuation, or whether we have evacuation, we want to make sure we do that contact, because they, it'll take a while to get their team together, and if they're called off, they have no problem with that, they see that as a benefit to actually get ready and prepared, and if they're not using, they can just, you know, they can, you know, go home or whatever they have to do. So looking into that, I think that's about it. If you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Just to warm that up, I appreciate the chairman and your sampling at the symposium, I think it was, I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but I saw the first presenter, and it was excellent. And just reiterate what you guys are doing, is that this is very, very important, folks. This isn't something that happens in someone else's community. We're in the middle of it, so we need to get serious about it.
Tom Parker's really good, by the way, I was there this weekend, so they're working hard out there. Do you know if our GIS person, I'm going back to fire, if our GIS person got together with the Forest Service yet, and the state forestry department, to see if they can start working together on putting good maps for us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, at this point, I have not heard anything, I actually was in the meeting yesterday with the GIS person from the Forest Service, and it was in my mind to ask him that question, and, you know, we got tied up and I didn't get that information. I know that the meeting has been canceled for tomorrow, so might give me an opportunity to make sure that maybe I get with Anthony and see where he's at with the GIS team, and see if, how we can go forward. I think if, when we look at the countywide protection plan as well, I think those maps, those roadmaps help a lot as well. When it comes to funding, I think they want to see that, they want to see those areas. So I'll see what I can do as far as getting in touch with either Angelo or-
And I think right now, the main, the main thing we need to look at is who's going to be equipped to actually put together maps, and put together information on one, on one map, so that we can all look at it as Eco Watershed Group, and start defining what areas we really want to start defending when it comes to the watershed and fires, so that we can start putting in for grant funds to help the Forest Service fight or clean up these areas.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, yesterday, in the scenarios that we had, we had maps of all the different districts, and so I don't know where those maps came from, obviously probably from the Forest Service, but there were some very detailed maps that I think that we can go off of, or maybe get those maps. Of course, those are mostly Forest Service and the roads that go within those, the watershed that goes, go within those maps, so that might be a start. I'll do my best to try to contact them and see if we can get something at the next meeting to determine where we're at. It's going to be beneficial to us as well as putting those into the CWP plan, so that people understand the fuel reduction areas we're looking at, the watershed areas we're looking at, the type of mitigation that we're going to need to do to make sure that our communities are safe if we have that fire. Everybody talks about a catastrophic fire, I can't predict that, and I don't think anybody can, and I don't want to predict that. What I want us to do is to be prepared. Prepare for the worst, hope for the best, and make sure that we do our part as a fire service and as a community, from a standpoint of understanding that the community could do their part as an individual property owner, as well as as a fire service.
And I think the main goal of what we're talking about, the GIS, is, I know the Forest has a great, great map for their purposes, so does the state, and so does BLM, but we need is to see what entity is going to take all this information and put it together, that we could all use it as a county, and I think that's what our goal was. But thanks for all your, all your work.
Yes, sir. Yeah, on the maps and stuff, I think your best lead agency is a federal government agency, and the purpose I say is, we've passed all of our layers to the Forest Service a couple years back during one of the fires, Angela went and sat with the trailer that came in, we brought all our layers on a hard drive, so they have our layers, but the layers we can never get as a state government entity since 9/11 is the utility layers. So we can't tell you where a power line is, we can't tell you where a gas line is, they won't release that information to us, the utility companies. I don't know if they'll do it to the federal government, that would probably be a better chance of getting it, but they've never allowed us to have those layers. They'll tell us, they'll print us a map that shows where their stuff is, but they won't give us those layers that we can load it into ours to make one comprehensive map when these fires come down, and things like that. So that's why I say we might want to focus on them, because they might have more pool to get those layers, because you're going to have utilities going through these watersheds. We have underground high-pressure pipelines coming through these regions, we have overhead power lines, like Randy mentioned, through Tucson Electric, and so that might be the way to get those layers, because we're not going to, we'll never have a complete map for those purposes. And every time we ask, they cite back to 9/11, when all that happened, they locked down all the infrastructure maps at that point in time, and don't give them out anymore.
Commissioner Ramos, that's a good point, John, that's exactly what the situation is, I mean, since 9/11, I mean, we, we have tried, and even in subdivision areas where we've had people with GIS experience, try to get something together for the, you know, for the community-wide protection plan, and they will not release those, just for the fact that they've locked all of those down, and the public just can't go out and get those anymore like they used to. That's, that's all the electric companies, power lines, gas lines, it's just some, something that they feel, I guess, through, you know, through Homeland Security, it's just a security issue, and they're not going to release those to the public. So that's a good point, John, I forgot to bring that up.
And I wanted to admit, the lady on the animals, probably the best way is we get her contact information and get it to dispatch, they have that reverse 911 system where they can put her in as one of the priorities that gets paged on every evacuation, and that'll be the best way, instead of relying on the sheriff's office, because they're kind of going crazy when an evacuation hits, they're in the middle of it, and they don't have a card they can pull out and try and remember who they're supposed to call. He's mainly worried about his people and the citizens, and so that would be the best way, because then reverse 911, as soon as they threw an evacuation, whoever their main person is would get a text, a phone call, just like the sheriff does, and I do, every time there's an incident.
And, Mr. Chairman, and John, I mean, that's the point too, that reverse 911 works, but they, they want to be kind of prepared prior to that, whether we go with it or whether we don't, that they could be ahead of the game, so that's a, that's a good idea to go with them, but the thing is, is even if we're thinking about evacuation without sending that evacuation in and one, it gives them an opportunity to be prepared prior to you giving them the evacuation report, so, but it is an idea I'll be looking into.
And you need to make sure your name's on that list, so you're-
Yes, thank you.
Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, pretty much business as usual down there, we're doing a lot of patching, especially on our 2014 LGRF projects, getting them ready for chip seal. The abatment committee did meet down there on the Hughes Road, down there at Seafar, talked to Ty Bays, I should have that letter of their recommendation by the next commission meeting. I did get the lights installed over there on Cottage Sand, I do have one resident that is kind of raised and caving about them, and I went out there last night, we turned them on last night, and I don't blame him, so I talked to the engineer yesterday just in case, and we're looking at maybe having to move those things a couple hundred feet, and we'll get them away from the housings and stuff like that, so I want to-
Not even hear that.
The lights that we put up there on Cottage Sand, one of them goes right, is right beside this guy's property, and he's got a real nice backyard, spends a lot of-
That's one on the wall?
Yeah, spends a lot of time out there in the summer, so I went out there last night, turned them on and looked at it, so I don't, I don't blame him, but I did talk to the engineer yesterday, just in case, and we went out there and took a look at it, and we're looking at maybe moving those things a couple hundred feet, north and south, there's two of them out there, and that way it'll get off of, it won't be shot on anybody's house or private property, it'll be out there where it shouldn't bother anybody.
With the proper signage and enforcement, do we need those lights?
I used to live out there years ago, and that's what the people are telling me, we, all these years, we've been able to do without it. I don't know if there's been accidents out there or anything, but I don't know for some reason why now we're, we think we need these flashing yellow lights.
Well, that was the money that was appropriated by the federal government, some safety that we could use anywhere, and we did a study on that, and they did have quite a bit, had quite a bit of accidents out there on that corner. And a lot of it is, there's some kids, you know, a lot of kids go out there, they had to bear them out in the party and stuff, and some of them never been out there before, they hit that curve and they're running too fast.
That old road is escrow.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why we're hoping to put those lights up there, just to warn them. On there, I know, you know, people that's lived out there know about them, but there's a lot of people that just go up and down that road that don't care and stuff, so, once we get them moved, I think everybody will be happy to go. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions, other questions for Earl? No? Okay, Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to report for the month of February, our stats, we had 402 calls for service, that's pretty, pretty busy for the month, which only has 28 days. So took 129 reports, and we investigated four motor vehicle collisions. In regards to our civil process division, we served 530 papers for the month of February, had nine round-trip transports to the prisons, back and forth here locally, for a total of 2,921 miles. The paperwork that was served, one that bothers me a little bit is our RITs. RITs is when we're putting liens or taking property from people, that went up, from January, we had two, and in February, we had 10, so that, I mean, people are still struggling economically, and that's a little disappointing to me, but other than that, the staff has really been working, the staff has really been working good, keeping up with the calls and that, and I want to thank them for what they do. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sheriff? Yes, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have the report that I handed you guys this morning. In the last 15 days since the last report, we've had $30,000 come in from taxes, and a little bit for debt service. At the end of February, we did our interest-only payment on the bonds of $102,000, and that fund, of course, is pretty, pretty flush, but we won't have another payment until August, so we're doing fairly well there. Previously, about a year ago, I guess, we did transfer about $750,000 out of the investment account to the general fund, which we later were able to draw back in. Back in October, though, we had about $400,000 that we transferred out, that we had not, haven't had the funds to transfer back. And in the last two weeks, we've actually transferred close to $1 million, and that's just in trying to keep, keep up with all the bills and everything, to keep, anytime our general fund balance shows less than $2 million, we get kind of antsy, and we start trying to make plans, and, you know, we confirmed with John a little bit about, about the transactions that we, that we did to get this, make this money available, and we still have a little bit of money that we transferred from the stocks and bonds to actual, in the money market account. And part of the thinking is that we need to keep the general fund, you know, healthy, not just because of, you know, meeting the bills, but we get paid, we get fees charged to the general fund, so I'd rather we try to eliminate those fees and keep the money in the general fund rather than in the money market account, where we get almost nothing. So, but we do have a little bit still in the money market account, if anything else comes up, and we're at one and a half million this morning in the general fund, so. After one of the meetings that we had before, there was some discussion about the revenues and stuff that's coming in, and I would just like to, I know we mentioned something about having a meeting of the Parks and Recreation, I believe it is, that sets the policies for the rentals and so on, for the, for the county's buildings, and I'd like to request that I can, you know, attend whenever they decide, or whenever they have the meeting, so we can kind of address some of the concerns that we have. I think we need to have a little better system of how we, not how we track, but how we are given the information about the rentals and stuff, because, I mean, we've got people coming into our office and saying, I want to pay X number of dollars for rental of Baton Park or whatever, and then we say, well, is this a rental, is this a rental part, or is this a deposit part? Some people say, I don't know, this is just what I was told I have to pay, and, and so we have, we have actually broken down Baton Park now has a separate deposit line item, because it was confusing when you look at them, and some had, you know, $150 deposit that was on the revenue side, so we really never knew what was actually staying in the general fund and what was being returned. So we just need to have a little better, you know, system to be able to know that we are being able to track, you know, the revenues and the deposits, and we even, we even get the comments of, oh, I don't pay a deposit. Well, it's not that they don't pay a deposit necessarily, it's that they've posted a deposit and have left it there, and they, they don't expect to get it back, but we need to know that, rather than, I mean, when, when other people are sitting there in our office and they hear that, when somebody makes a comment, I don't pay a deposit, they, they feel, well, hey, I have to pay a deposit, you know, why don't they? And that, it got a little dicey there with the lady, and I, you know, we'd just rather avoid that kind of stuff, so, like I say, if we can get, just so we can make sure that we are able to get a better handle on what is coming in and, and, you know, where it's coming from, so.
Steve, I think-
As, as far as attending the meeting, you're awfully welcome to do that, but originally we had appointed Alfred as a member of that- we had appointed Alfred as a member of that, that committee, and I think the intent was that the treasurer had a seat on that committee, so I think you're a member of that committee de facto.
Yes, we haven't met it in quite a while, but we have discussed having a meeting here soon. As Matt, we can set it for March 19th if you'd like, check and see if we've got vacancy in this, in this room, and we can do it then. But I, I was also, have been given some concerns since I, since I chaired that committee on, on who's getting the breaks, why they're using it for, for profit purposes, and if someone's using it for, for a profit, I mean, we really need to look at that issue. I really don't think it's, is good unless they're using it for a benefit of somebody that's sick or ill or something like that, I think that's different. But when they're using it for benefit, I think we really need to, or for profit, I think we really need to look at that and maybe add some kind of a policy for that portion. Another portion we need to look at is the rental of the Baton Park area because they're not included in the 10% for employees. We need to look at the, the, our new building here on, on the highway and, and see what we're gonna, see how are we gonna manage those, those issues. So, yes, I think it's time we do have another meeting. These issues hadn't come up in, in quite a while, so we thought these are pretty comfortable, but we will definitely look at it, and anybody that wants to attend is more welcome. I think the, the 19th will be good. We'll shoot for 10 o'clock. Most of the people that participate in this committee are employees, so it'd be good if we have it nice and early, get people back to work.
Okay. Leading out. That's it. You have any questions?
Can you grab any questions for Steve?
No, thank you, Steve. Madam Assessor?
Chairman, Commissioners, I am getting ready to send out notice of the value April 1st, and I'm encouraging the property owners to look at that notice of value. Their taxes are based on that valuation that we send out of our office. They only have 30 days to protest that value if they feel that there's an error on that value. And another thing is just making sure that your exemptions are on there too, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Sign-up date today for any potential candidates out there, Districts, Commissioner Districts 1 and 2, Sheriff, Assessor, and Magistrates Division 1 and 2. Begin at 9 o'clock this morning, so I think I'm going to have a full house here as soon as we adjourn this meeting. I'm expecting quite a few people to walk in there. Hoping for a smooth day today. Once I get those names and everything, I'll report on Thursday of the, of the individuals that did sign up for candidacy. Other than that, unless you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. John?
No, just, I think everything's listed. We were waiting on hearing on Senate Bill 268 to find out. You know, Mike had his bill that was to do the study in the three-county area on the mental health issues. The bill went through, but so graciously, they stripped all the appropriation out of the bill and sent through a bill that says you can do all these things, but there's just no money to do it. So-
Thank you.
He got his bill through, and they just, they stripped the entire appropriation, it was almost a 500, flew over $500,000 appropriation, and they stripped it out.
You need to get that tucked in the regular bill, two or three.
Yeah, we need it in the regular budget, but, so the program has been approved to do the study, to do the pilot program in the three-county area. I don't know how we're going to do it without any funding, but at least we got approval. Senate Bill 268, hopefully the governor, something, we're hearing that there's possibilities that there's some language being vetoed out, which is the language that a hospital cannot send to collections a person that is at the, greater than the 200% of poverty level or less than 200% of poverty level. That was some language that Senator Candelaria wanted in the bill, that a hospital couldn't turn those people away, and they also could not bill them if there was unpaid balances. I've heard that that may be stripped out by the governor's office under line item veto. Haven't heard any more. My assumption, like I talked before, is that she strips out the additional taxing authority because that's a new taxing authority, and they already believe that the counties and municipalities have plenty of taxing authority in the state and they don't want to give them anymore. So, we will let the commissioners know as soon as we find out anything on that. They got the new mailboxes in in the front of the building. I proceeded to drop my solid waste payment in the wrong mailbox and had to call Ted and tell him to go get the, get my payment out of the wrong mailbox. I didn't even notice the new ones are there. I walked right past them, and when I got to the front, I saw some concrete residue in the planter, and I thought, "Why do we, where are we even pouring concrete?" And then I realized, "Oh, yeah, new mailbox is out front." So, those are out front for the public if they'll start putting their payments to the treasurer's office and the solid waste is, one is marked with that, and the other one is our normal mail. If we get them in the normal mail, we, we will gladly take them to the treasurer's office. But there are two separate mailboxes out there. One is marked for treasurer and, and solid waste, and one is our mail. And we'll be getting rid of the two that are the wrong ones that I seem to have a problem using. So, nobody else does, it's just me, and I'm the one that bought the other mailboxes, so. Other than that, we're proceeding with the sheriff's design of this building, the remodel in this building. Kevin has worked up a design, he'll get with me, and the chairman, we'll take a look at it based on some things that we had told him to put in there, and then I'll get with the other two commissioners and show you, and then we'll go and meet with the sheriff. We have the $300,000 that we've received, the grant, and the commission has signed off on and been sent back up, so that's the money we're using for that project. In the capital outlay bill, we had another 225 given to us to finish the front of the building, the canopy, resurface the front to get rid of that failing stucco on the front of the building. Yeah, on the pillars and stuff, we're looking at. Our architect does a design to kind of clean that off, make that more like the conference center so that our buildings begin to match. So you'll be able to tell when you see a building, whether it's a county building or not. And so that is one thing that he is going to, what he's working on, he'll get to us, like I said, we'll get to the sheriff, get that out to bids, we can get that vault taken care of. I've kind of talked to the sheriff a little bit about things that we're looking at doing because of the reduction in money, so we'll present that to him and show him what we're doing to try and get him his vault here in the building instead of at the basement of the courthouse. Other than that, I, you know, just dealing with personnel matters and regular business and trying to make sure everybody's, we're doing our finances so we can keep everybody working and keep all our services going. Our big push for revenues again, you know, kind of Steve mentioned, we, we go into this lull, and then around the May-June timeframe is when we take this big kick, as he shows you on his report, he's still got about 2.2 million out there to collect. We get the PILT money, we get our copper money, we get this big kick at the end, so we kind of go in cycles. We drop in the middle, drop at the first of the year, come up in the middle, and then we drop for a little bit and then come up with his first set of payments on taxes, and, and that kind of rides us through, but then we kind of make this tail where we're playing with the, the funds through the brokerage account in the general fund to try and get us through, and then we got about $5 million that comes in a May-to-June timeframe is what we're looking at. So, we'll get that kicked in. So, but everything else is going pretty good.
Any questions for John?
Well, I know that one of our goals way back, Mr. Chairman, was to try and run our budget without affecting PILT funds, and so we can always use that as extra, and I know it's, it's been difficult, but we want to continue to try and do that best we can.
Yeah, and we need to find some other sources of, I mean, unfortunately, when PILT was given to the county many years ago, it was incorporated into two operating budgets, and so it's, it's about $1.8 million, and to strip $1.8 million out of an $8 million, $9 million operating budget is very hard, so we need to, we're continually looking at, are there different sources of funding, revenue streams out there? Graciously, the federal government reauthorized PILT for one year in a five-year bill. I don't know why, they just didn't go to five years, but they only went one year, so we've got to go through this all again next year to try and get PILT refunded again for multiple years, but, yeah, we're looking, we're, we're talking. You know, we've come up with some things that I, they're not favorable as, you know, everybody's putting in the red light cameras. We thought of those down in the I-10 corridor, but trying not to affect county residents' transient traffic. The sheriff patrols down there, he, he sees it. Everybody speeds in that corridor, but those aren't things that are, they're, they're hard to collect on. You go to court on some of them, you see Albuquerque doing it right now. Arizona had them, they shut them down, they bring them back on, they shut them off, so, you know, it's something that's not attractive.
I think we just need to try and do it gradually and continue to do what we can.
No, it's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's one thing we're looking at. We got to cut that, and it's just hard.
Well, it's going to be a lot harder if they ever cut the PILT funding, so-
No, it will. It's a dramatic, yeah, it's, it's life-changing for Grant County if PILT funding doesn't get from, doesn't come in.
Well, did we schedule the Wrestlers State Championships for next meeting? Oh, they're looking at each other, let's see. Okay. And I, I think it'd be good if you were to invite the Silver Youth and the Cobra Youth also, and the grapplers, to see if they have state champs. I know they had a bunch of little ones, it'd be good to bring them in and make them, get them all recognized and give them their, their county pins.
I know this week is testing for the schools, and so that's why we were not staying in this week, so, because of the testing.
Testing is tomorrow.
Oh, it just started at Silver High.
Oh, the Cobra just started today, but it ends tomorrow.
Silver High starts today and goes for two weeks, and the juniors go for three weeks.
Is it?
Are you Silver High and Cobra High above?
Well, that's the main, that was what our discussion was last meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I know Silver High, the juniors, like I have a sophomore, and he just started for two weeks, and juniors are three weeks, he told me, and La Plata is a week.
Junior of two days.
Oh, yeah. My son says it's three weeks, so he's doing something.
Because they scored a little higher over a Cobra.
Hey. All I can say is my son scored a 31 on the ACT.
No, Paul.
He scored a 31 on the ACT, so.
No, I'm just kidding. But we really need to, you know, to, to get those in here, we really need to recognize those state champs. Other than that, I really don't have much, but thanks to the, the maintenance department for getting Baton ready. Baseball's on its way, and the Little League teams will start practicing out there, and if people are heading out to Fort Bear, please be careful with these kids crossing the roadways. We have a lot of kids that walk to practice over there. Unfortunately, they don't have transportation, so please be aware that there will be people walking on that main road.
That's it. Commissioner?